Okay, should we run this by again?
Welcome, everybody to the 2024 September 23 city council meeting. I would ask the city clerk at this point to call the roll, please.
Councillor Long, present. Councillor McGlothlin.
Present.
Councillor Runyon.
Present in outer space.
Councillor Randall.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present on Zoom.
Mayor Mace.
Here. Item three is pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask councillor Tim McGlothlin, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do it without the comma.
Nope, but they didn't teach us that in school.
I know.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. We are taking out two items on the agenda will not be on there. Item five A will not be, and item 11A has have been removed from the agenda. With that, may I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to jump in and interrupt the motion on agenda item five B. I'm sorry, agenda item five A honoring Jill Hoyanga. Ms. Hoyanga is here tonight.
Okay, welcome, Jill. Okay, with that, we'll have an amendment to the amendment. And I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended with item 11A eliminated.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Randall and seconded by councillor Long to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five A. We're here to honor Jill Hoyanga of our Public Works Department, so introducing our assistant public works director.
Why not? So every year, the ACWA or Association of Clean Water Agencies recognizes the achievements of an outstanding agency and an outstanding individual who have excelled in the areas of pollution prevention, environmental leadership, or innovation in environmental management. Nominations for these awards are solicited from ACWA members each year, and the ACWA board selects the award recipients who are recognized at the annual ACWA Summer Conference. This year, Jill Hoyanga was selected as the outstanding individual. We are here today to recognize Jill's efforts and accomplishments that she has made in the field. This year, Jill has committed to a speaking tour where she has presented our model FOG ordinance, which stands for fats, oils, and grease, at four events so far, and an additional three events in the near future. Congratulations, Jill.
Thank you for all you do for the city. How long have you been with us now? How many years? Okay, so yeah, seven years. Okay. Well, yeah, we really appreciate the job you're doing, and I know the committees you work with really appreciate your efforts and and your enthusiasm for a job well done. So and it's always nice to be honored from your your peers. I think this goes a step further because it's a professional association. And so congratulations, we appreciate your all your service. Thank you. Okay, item five B is a presentation from the president of the Dallas Little League, Katie Kelly. She here? Come forward and please identify yourselves and for the record.
So I'm Patrick Urine. I am representing the Dallas Little League as the umpire in chief and the field and facilities coordinator.
Good evening. I'm Katie Kelly. I am the president for the Dallas Little League.
I'll actually be delivering our presentation tonight. Councillors, thank you for allowing us the time on the agenda this evening. Many of you might remember me from last meeting where we, the Dallas Little League, came in and briefly talked about the status of Kramer Ballpark and the agreement we have with the county who has recently taken over the management of the ballpark from Parks Department. And so we wanted to come today and just do a brief recap of the last year and the collaboration we've had with the county. And I want to remind the councillors of the letter that the county administrator has sent to the city manager earlier this year referencing the annual operating budget for Kramer Park as roughly $110,000. And as I go through our presentation, I also want to remind you that this presentation and this ask ultimately is to ask the councillors to consider adopting a change to the ordinance that allows the temporary lodging tax to be partially reallocated to the maintenance and upkeep of Kramer Field. Now, for those of you that don't know, Kramer Field was established in 1950 by a gentleman named Bill Kramer. So next year's Kramer Field 75th anniversary. It was established with one field initially to meet the needs of the local baseball community. 1950, if you think about it, baseball was pretty much king as the sports in the United States. And it grew based upon the needs of the community to the size that we see it today, and it got diversified beyond just baseball fields. Softball's been played down there, both youth and adult. There's been soccer. There's individual organizations that bring in events throughout the summertime related to sports camps or some religious organizations use the use the facilities down there to facilitate some of their summertime activities. So as it relates to the recap for 2024, the picture you see in front of you on the slide deck is the Little League Board with the county commissioners and the important people from the county in terms of their administrative body and their field and facility services team. This is the group that's largely responsible for the uplift that if you go out to Kramer Park that you will have noticed occurred in the last, let's say, 10 months. Over, please. So I just wanted to really briefly recap some of the cleanup that the collaboration accomplished this year. So but let me take you back one year really briefly so I can give you an idea of what we were facing. We had a ballpark that was in a dilapidated condition from the standpoint of being able to play baseball. We had goat heads on the field. We had rodent holes in the outfield. We had fences that were in disrepair. And my previous role, I was the safety officer for the Little League District, which includes Central Oregon and Hood River and the DOWLS. And we've tried to get the district to approve us to have the All-Star, the district All-Star Tournament, which happens at the end of the season every June for about two weeks. And as a safety officer for the district, looking at the ballpark, I couldn't approve it. It just wasn't safe enough for us to be able to award the DOWLS that tournament. So we brought this to the county commissioners last year and said, we have a problem. We need your help. The ballpark needs to be sustained to the point where it is playable and safe up until a long-term plan can be implemented. That's all we're asking for is just give us something that we can use from year to year and the community can utilize beyond baseball just until something else can be developed. So the county listened to us and they embarked on this plan with Little League and a couple of other organizations I'll mention a little later. But here you can see on this list, here's, and this is just a partial list. And I also want to point out, we had a lot of the in-kind donations from different businesses in town that came in with heavy equipment, came in with materials, things of that nature. So it's, the burden was not just on Little League and was not just on the county. Little League is a community-wide organization. We rely, we're a volunteer organization. We rely on our in-kind donations to kind of make our seasons work. So I want to point out that the county and Little League just did not bear these upgrades on their own. And you can see the quote from Tyler Stone, county administrator from the community news early in the year. The sense of community that we can build around Kramer Park is real. Kramer Park's been around 75 years next year. There are generations of the DOWLS residents that have been at Kramer Park, utilize Kramer Park, remember Kramer Park very fondly, and we want to continue that for as long as Kramer Park needs to be viable. So again, this is a list of what we've done. Continue. So here we want to recap some of the things that occurred this year. And so we put Hydro up here because they're our flagship gold sponsor. They're the they're the partner, the business partner that helped us the most this year with our overall operating budget. You can see a couple photos of the kids. We're deeply tied with the high school and building connections with what the feeder program is for our high school team. We want to rebuild baseball in the DOWLS and make sure that the DOWLS is known across the state as the baseball community that it once was 20 years ago. That's our ultimate goal. And we have a junior umpire program. You can see up here, that's myself and a couple of our 13, 14-year-olds. So we're trying to, we're trying to keep kids involved in the programs in other ways than when they're playing careers over with Little League, like these kids play in other leagues, but so we're trying to look at holistically. It's not just the five through eight-year-olds. Little League has T-ball all the way through. Next year, we're expanding to bring a girl softball and 13 and 14-year-olds. So you will have five-year-olds, like five-year-olds to 14-year-olds to be participating in our program across our community. We want to grow that. We can't grow that without a viable place to play, and Kramer Park is our viable place to play. We need to keep it that way. And so here again, this was the state of some of our facilities. You can see our dugouts, some of the disrepair that I had mentioned. And in this, and in this photo, I want to, I want to just highlight some of the things that we're trying to do to look forward now. We have the opportunity right now to go to the district administrator and pitch to them that we want to host the All-Star Tournament next year. Every community, Bend, Redmond, Sisters, Jefferson County, Prineville, Hood River, and the DOWLS. We can all put our hat in to host that tournament. Now, usually about every five, six years at a minimum, we're kind of required by our charter with them to do that. We haven't been able to live up to that. But what's happened recently is it's kind of defaulted to the big communities of Redmond and Bend, and they get the economic benefit of running that tournament every year. We're in a position now with just a little bit more work on the ballparks to be able to secure that tournament at home. And we are very anxious to bring that tournament back to our community. It's a two-week tournament, so it's a long commitment. Those central organ teams have to come up here and they have to stay with us and they have to use our businesses and use our facilities, just like we've done for the last five, six, eight, 10 years going down to Central Oregon at this time. So what we're looking for is the county to continue their commitment. To the county, in discussions with the county, we've talked about the temporary lodging taxes, the vehicle that can likely support the the long-term needs of Kramer Park, again, for as long as we need it. And I want to, I want to point out temporary lodging tax, TRTs. What we're trying to say is we're using it as an economic vehicle, right? We can host a lot of tournaments beyond just this tournament that I'm mentioning. Can we go to the next slide, please? We have other organizations. This is an organization that I run, and I have a group of volunteers. It's a travel baseball team. So we started this year with eight, nine, and 10-year-olds. Next year, the community's showing us so much support, we're going to expand through eight through 14-year-olds. We're going to host two or three tournaments next year if Kramer Field will be in a condition to allow us to. These are weekend tournaments, two-day tournaments, where all those teams from Portland to Central Oregon to Pendleton, they come here. If they're coming from Salem, they're coming from the Tri-Cities, they're coming here and they're spending the night, right? It's beyond a one-day trip. That happens. It's happening all around us in communities everywhere. We're traveling to these tournaments because previously I can't host a tournament at home. So I just want to point out that that Little League and the counties ask for temporary lodging tax dollars to support this really is in the form of economic development. We can bring people into this community to spend money in this community, but we need a viable place to do it. So I just want to point out that we hosted a doubleheader this year. We had two Waltons come in town. And no matter what anybody thinks of Kramer Park, the Walton team came in town and they looked at that green open space. And they said, Coach, you got a gem here. We have nothing like this. We don't have anything close to this. This wide-open green space with these types of baseball fields where our community can come down, they were jealous. They were super jealous. And it really gave me a renewed pride for that for that ballpark and that complex that I honestly didn't have to that level before. But when I had heard just really the genuine kind of outpouring from the opposing coach and a couple of his parents, it was like, okay, I, my heart's into this thing now deeper than it was before. I think we really need to support Kramer Park. And so again, we're here to present this to you just so you, it's on your radar. We want to make sure that moving forward, that the city and the county recognize the value of the ballpark and the park in general, because it is multipurpose. Soccer teams were down there this week practicing. And then we're going to ask for a collaboration between the city and the county and how we fund this thing moving forward until a long-term solution is determined. So in the future, when you have considerations from the TLT or other ways from the county, other asks from the county to help them, Little League, the Junior Hawks organizations, and the other organizations that we can represent tonight, the Babe Ruth Organization, youth soccer. We all need you to collaborate, you know, these leadership bodies, the county and city to collaborate to support this again until another complex is built. Anything, Dad? Okay, so that's what I needed. That's why I wanted to come out and talk to you tonight.
Okay, thank you. You have nothing you want to add, Ms. Kelly? When you come up to the microphone, you're required to say at least something.
Okay, I can say something. I wanted to touch on the slide where Patrick was talking about our field cleanup day. I think it's two, this one before, two before this. This slide highlights a couple of photos from our field cleanup day. Little League hosts annually at least one field cleanup day at Kramer Field preseason. And historically, it has been solely a Little League event. And this, this season in 2024, we had an event that was hugely collaborative with the county, and we had a lot of support, as you can see. But it wasn't just board members present. We also recruited 100 community members from the DOWLS, from Sherman County, from Duffer, because their kids also participate in our league and play at Kramer and see the value in what we're doing. And so, yes, we had county employees and you had board members. But you had 100-plus volunteers also from across the region that saw the value in what was happening. And that was very early on in this kind of new relationship, and it really just blossomed from there. And so I really, I wanted to highlight that because it's important for people to know. And so I really, I wanted to highlight that because it's important for people to know that there are a lot of people invested and a lot of people are looking to our city and county leadership to guide, right? And when community members, parents and, and my kids see everybody in their leadership working together. It's going to create more buy-in. And as a volunteer board member, I need that support as well. And I think it will just create additional success for us. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Urain or Ms. Kelly? Well, one quick one. Did you, I thought you mentioned before that you're kind of opening up the scope of your activities to include, you're the Little League, but you're, you're also going to take on soccer? And I thought, adult softball?
We don't, we're not taking those on. Those are activities that those organizations use Kramer Fields as well.
Okay, so you're not.
Additional user groups.
Yeah, okay. So you're not, but you're not merging with them or anything?
No, we are taking on girls softball. So we are taking on youth softball as part of Little League. But adult softball and the soccer leagues, they independently run and they use Kramer Park independently of Little League.
Do you happen to know when the last time that the DOWS hosted a regional tournament? Was it way before your time or?
The district tournament? Two, 2017 maybe, or before? Yeah, potentially before that even.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Who manages the schedule for when groups come in? How do you organize that?
Um, it's a collaborative, collaborative effort right now. It's mostly on the county. So they vet and have a process for users. They have a user agreement that requires some documentation. User groups that have a reservation have kind of a first right to certain areas of the field during certain uses, certain periods of the year. But say for instance, if Patrick's Junior Hawks baseball teams need to practice on a weekend during the season. He will get the appropriate documentation on file with the county. Make that reservation as needed, but then also collaboratively work with me to make sure that Little League isn't using that for games or practices. And if we're not, then he has every right to use that space.
Do you ever have any disputes cross scheduling to place two teams on the same weekend?
Not so far. We haven't. Yeah, it's been pretty great. We do have a lot of teams even within our organization that need practice space and so forth during the season. So sometimes they'll collaborate and use the field at the same time for practice space and, and work together and, and that works really well. We've historically just had really good working relationships with user groups and, and been able to, to manage that pretty well.
Thank you. Excellent.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 5C is a presentation from the Chair of the Columbia Gorge Community College, Kim Morgan.
My first meeting here. Tom has a handout.
I think we have that.
May have been included in the packet. Yeah.
Listen up. Right. Thank you, Mayor Mays and Council for letting us do this presentation. My name is Kim Morgan. I am Board Chair for CGCC's Board of Education. I've been on the board. This is my finishing up my seventh year, going into my eighth year. CGCC is going to be going out for a bond this November. Our past bond is expiring, sunsetting, if you will, in 2025. And what we are hoping to do is continue that bond, same rate, no tax increases to the voters, and that's at 27 cents per 1,000 assessed value. And that is also Wasco County and Hood River County, not just Wasco County taking this on. So a little bit about CGCC. Columbia Gorge Community College prioritizes equitable access to education, empowers all students through learning and provides and drives inclusive prosperity throughout our community. Currently, we have 290 full-time students. We have 749 part-time students. And CGCC was the first community college in the state of Oregon to be recognized as a Hispanic-serving institution. We are currently at 28% Hispanic student population. From a lightcast study that was created and instituted by Oregon Community College Association. We had 645 local jobs created in the area, $45 million of regional income added. And one out of 53 regional jobs is supported by the college. And you can see that we have served 21% Washington students and 78% are Oregon students. Columbia Gorge Community College's Education Service District is Wasco and Hood River County. But we do serve beyond our region because there are not community colleges that are actually able to serve in proximity. Nearest community college for say, Skamania or Lickatatt County would be Clark or up in Yakima. So quite a distance to go. So Columbia Gorge Community College is important for those Washington students, but as you can see, the majority is Oregon students. And we are part of the dual enrollment program for both Hood River and the Dallas High Schools. And that provides opportunities for vocational training as well as additional credits that can apply to, you know, furthering on transfer degrees while earning college credit. In 2019, we broke ground for the Advanced Manufacturing Skill Center and the Residence Hall for the Dallas campus. The college took on that particular project without going out for a further bond. And part of what we're hoping to achieve with the bond is to pay off that loan. We did have help, tremendous help from our partners in the community, especially City of the DOWS, Port of the DOWS, and we have been most thankful for that. And what we have seen is that in turn, we are driving economic growth with businesses, especially with our advanced manufacturing program. We had a, for instance, a business that came in that was able to develop a prototype with our instructors in the advanced manufacturing where we have CNC machining, 3D printing, welding. For a carburetor that was tested and showed improved gas mileage and performance for a vehicle, and that carburetor is going into production. That is a business that is being created because of the college. That is where we are contributing to the economic growth of the region. Partnering with the community, you see this picture here of Advance, excuse me, Adventist Health worked with our advanced manufacturing program to develop playground equipment for their daycare center. We also developed and built playground equipment with Chenoweth for Chenoweth Primary with involvement from the students. We gave them the pieces to put it together, how they would envision a playground setup, and we built that for them. These are some of the things that the Columbia Gorge Community College provides within the community. It's not just, not, not to take away from education. It's very important, but this is not just about education. It's about the community. I'm a firm believer that community college, that's the primary first word that we really lean on, is community. So on to the bond renewal. As mentioned before, this expires in 2025. The current bond going to sunset in 2025 was passed in 2004. Funds were used to build the Hood River Campus and redevelop the Dallas Campus and to meet student needs. Again, mentioning that passing the bond would not raise taxes on citizens. It would be 27 cents per $1,000 assessed value, just as it was. This is a $13 million bond. And $5.5 million match from the state of Oregon to bring us to a little over 18 million for total benefit if we are able to pass the bond. Part of what we want to do with this bond passage, if, if we're fortunate enough to pass, is enhance the student safety and campus security. Currently, the Dallas Campus, Hood River Campus do not have lockdown measures, locks in place, security cameras. I can't believe I'm admitting this publicly. But these are things that are our true needs and necessities for us to provide a safe campus for our students and for our faculty and staff. We would be refitting classrooms and labs to better serve our students. Just recently, our nursing program, we were able to achieve through an 80% funding grant for SIM labs or, you know, what's the dummy called? Remember? The mannequin, excuse me, it's mannequin, not a dummy, a mannequin. We were able to get that set up so that actually the hospital is able to send their staff over for training as well. Reformatting the spaces in Hood River and the Dallas campuses to meet the needs of the workforce, training and community. One of the things that is fantastic with the advanced manufacturing program, we have community Fridays that if you have an idea that you see a need for CNC machining or 3D printing, you can pay a small fee, sign up. Our instructors are there to help people in the community to develop. Maybe you have the next greatest invention that you want to see come to light. We'd be, again, refinancing the Regional Skill Center and the Residence Hall so that we can get rid of that pesky interest rate on the debt. And that, that's it. Want to invite all of you to come up to the college and see what we're doing. Again, we've got the advanced manufacturing. We've got the nursing program, which also includes medical assisting. We have the electromagnetic, excuse me, electromechanical technology. Used to be referred to as the wind turbine program. It's expanding so that we can meet the needs of green energy needs and jobs in the area. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Morgan?
I just have a comment. I'd like to point out another impact that's not as well-known. The Corps of Engineers has a power plant training program. And the people selected for that are enrolled in your, I think it's the electromechanical technology program.
Yes.
Which I believe leads to a two-year associate degree. But more importantly, it gives them the skills and knowledge they need to go on and complete their apprenticeship.
That's right.
And then secure a professional career with the federal government.
That's right. We just passed that.
And so I think you have six or eight enrollees that, the current, at least the second-year class, something like that.
Yeah, I think.
Anyway, I just think it's important to point that out to show that you're not just a benefit to the community and the region, but also to the nation.
Never looked at it quite that way, but yes, you're right. And thank you. Oh, yes. And the aviation maintenance program, which has kicked off, and we just graduated our first cohort. Which, you know, if, if you're aware of shortage of aviation mechanics right now. We're, and we're trying very hard to get to the point of having our own hangar. I was involved in the legislation to pass that Columbia Gorge Regional Airport is recognized as an Oregon airport. And so I was involved with Dan Spots and several others to get that passed so that we have that as a recognized Oregon classroom space over at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I recently attended a Zoom meeting related to the Columbia Gorge bond issue, and I found it very informative, and thank you for inviting me.
You're welcome. Every, every Thursday except for last Thursday at seven.
Counselor Richardson has his hand up. Counselor Richardson?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor Mays. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I think it's really important to do as you've done here tonight to point out both the the manifold benefits of having a thriving community college with trade programs locally, but also that this bond does not raise rates. It's essentially a continuation. I am a little biased in that my nephew just started the aviation maintenance program this morning. So I admit to that, but I guess that also means we put our, put our kids where our heart is. Thanks for your time this evening and bringing this to us.
Thank you, Councilman Richardson.
Counselor Long?
So two weeks ago, I was in Washington DC with the community outreach team, asking for assistance with the aviation maintenance program and a number of other things. And I think it's important to remember that, excuse me, that this rate from 20 years ago is the same rate that we're asking for now. And one of the things that we had to fess up to in DC was that the projects had doubled in cost in the last few years. And so money is just not going as far as it has been going. And with this bond, it will go far, and it's actually going to go farther because when I put my financial advisor hat on, refinancing the debt that you currently have is also going to lower what it ultimately costs taxpayers. Plus, we're, we're really getting a world-class education facility right here that create jobs that are more than minimum wage, that they're actually family living wage jobs. And people often think that we don't have those in the DOWS, but we do. They're just hidden. They don't realize all of the things that you're doing with the core and with the port. It's like we go about doing our business, but we don't tout ourselves very well. So kudos to the college and the college board for making good decisions.
Thank you, Councilman Long.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I have one more good thing to say because I was at the college and I went over to the, the new equipment that has been secured. That is cutting-edge technology. And I have a technology background, computer science background, and it's just impressive what we have in our neighborhood, led by excellent instructors. We're very fortunate to have that program. I just, and I have full support for, my personal full, full support for your program and your bond.
Thank you so much. And I did want to add one tiny little thing that I had put in my notes and forgot to mention. And again, you know, all of the things that we've discussed, one of the things that I've been most proud of is that in 2019, we opened the college food pantry. And when the pandemic hit and there were, at the time, there were five food pantries throughout the Hood River, Wasco County region. We were one of only that stayed open during that time. And it has proved, proven to be very helpful for our students who might be food insecure, but it is also open to the community as a whole as well.
Good job.
Thank you.
I also attended, I attended two meetings of the committee that's trying to get this bond passed. And whatever it is worth, like Counselor McLaughlin, I'm supporting the bond and I plan on voting for it. And I hope everyone here in the audience goes along with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Mays.
Thank you.
I want to say what an honor it is to have been here. My grandfather was the city councilman of the DOWS for 15 years. So this is my first time in council chambers and I'm feeling a little overwhelmed. Thank you.
We appreciate his service too.
Thank you.
I'm sure he made as much money being counselor as you are as being president. Okay, item 5D. This is a part of the things that I do as mayor that I enjoy a lot because we're giving out awards today. And today, tonight, we are recognizing the local government academy graduates who are in attendance tonight. We have a, I'm going to go over here so I can give away the Certificates of Achievement, and we have medallions that we're going to be giving out as well. We have 12 graduates we're going to be honoring. I'm not sure how many of them are here. To learn about and support the city. We hope that you received a comprehensive understanding about how the city works. And we had seven sessions. The seven sessions lasted about an hour and a half each. And the presentations, and we had tours and demonstrations that were led by the city staff. And the staff wasn't the only ones who gave presentations. The mayor did as well. I heard it was the best. I heard it was the best one, is it?
Well, that's debatable.
So, we hope the experience will not only educate our citizens more about the workings of the city government, but also we hope to get some of you graduates to volunteer for some commissions and committees for the city. And we've had some success in the past. This is the fourth one, right? The fourth class?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, we've had success with the other three, not to put any pressure on you, but we've had, the other three classes, we have had some volunteers come forward and, after being through the academy, have come forward and volunteered to be on certain commissions and committees. So, with that, when I call your name up, you can, when I call your name, please come up and get your certificate. This is the medallion we're giving away. It says a city seal on it. It's a nice gift, I think, for everybody. I'll see that one to last. Jared Gosson. Congratulations, Jared.
Thank you so much.
Why don't you come stand over here, we'll do a picture out there.
Richard Wolf.
Get everyone there.
Congratulations. Kyle Johnson. There he is. Jennifer Jackward. Did I pronounce that right? Congratulations. Jakard. Thank you. AJ Rundell. Not here. David Ford. Congratulations, Mayor. Claire Grafer. Congratulations. Maria Moreno. He's coming in for his wife? Oh. Oh, he does. So, I was going to ask you for some identification. There's Maria's. Oh, there she is. Antonio Murataya. Two medallions. Congratulations. Ernestina Juarez. Norma Ruiz. I saved this one for last because this is the one last name I'm really not sure about how to pronounce it. I know who you are, but I don't. Matthew Barria? Barria, okay. Congratulations.
Thank you for running the program.
Thank you.
Okay, can we switch together so we can get a nice photo for the folks?
Before you, you can go ahead. I just, I think I'd be remiss if I did not recognize the lady standing in the back who organized the translations, the Spanish translation program. Maria Peña. Maria, how about a nice hand for Maria?
Thank you, Olga.
Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Tonight, we have two people that have signed up. First is Sally Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Have a letter I want to read to the council and to Mayor Mays, and then I'll be submitting it to the city clerk as well. Your city council, we are residents within a low-density residential zone of the Dallas, which we selected in part for the minimal noises and congestion in such a neighborhood. We have previously spoken with you regarding the problems created by the high concentration and lax management of short-term rental properties in our neighborhood. The short-term rental properties creating the most problems in our neighborhood are all owned by limited liability companies based in Portland. To the best of our knowledge, there are no onsite managers or long-term residents at these properties. We appreciate your review of potential city code amendments in order to improve the current short-term rental problems in our community. We reviewed the staff report to the council by Community Development Director Joshua Chandler dated July 22, and the related analysis and policy recommendations from MIG dated July 3. First, we request that you extend the current moratorium on the city issuing licenses for short-term rentals for an additional six months. Such an extension would provide the city with time to seek and gather community input on this matter. To date, we know of only one such outreach event by city officials. Mayor Mays graciously spoke at a neighborhood gathering in July. Second, we request that you limit the total number of short-term rental licenses issued by the city and further place a prohibition on licensing of a new short-term rental that is within a 1,000-foot radius of an existing short-term rental property. High concentration of multiple short-term rental properties presently in our neighborhood, some of which are marketed by the owners as the scenic series, has consumed available parking spaces and resulted in unacceptable noise levels. Third, we request that you publish a list of the addresses for all short-term rental properties in the Dallas, managers and the manager's current telephone numbers. Presently, due to the limited notification to neighbors who live a mere 100 feet away from a short-term rental property, neighbors who live 120 feet away from an offending short-term rental have no information for how to notify the manager of the offending property. Fourth, we request that you amend the city code to require notification to all neighbors within a 1,000-foot radius that the city has licensed a new short-term rental property. We request that the notification to neighbors include an active phone number for the manager and that the manager be required to respond to the problem within one hour. Fifth, we request that the city fund and implement some type of 24-hour accessible resource to respond promptly to problems arising at short-term rental properties. Existing reporting structure for complainants outlined in Ordinance 8.02.110 is impractical and unrealistic. Reasons include, one, the codes enforcement officers work only during daytime hours. Two, many noise-crowding behavior and parking problems emanating from short-term rentals occur at night. Three, by the time that the codes enforcement officers receive and respond to a written complaint, not only have the noise, crowding, behavior or parking problems changed, but the short-term renters have also vacated the property. For the city to expect sworn police officers to respond to every non-emergency noise, crowding and parking problem at short-term rentals is a very expensive consumption of city resources. City needs to develop a new pathway to receive and respond promptly to the problems that arise because of short-term rentals. Sixth, we request that you amend the city code for low-density residential zones, change bed and breakfast and vacation rentals from accessory use permitted outright to a conditional use. We have shared with you about the various problems arising from the high concentration of short-term rentals in our neighborhood aligns with the purpose for making some property uses conditional. I recommend you see Ordinance 10.3.050.010. The conditional use permitting process would provide all community members with notice and an opportunity to be heard about their concerns before the planning commission. Finally, we request that the city require all short-term rental properties, their owners and their operators to comply with existing and future city ordinances. Cities should not grant exemptions from compliance with amended or future ordinances based on a property's present operation as a short-term rental. Annual licensing requirement should involve deeper review, inspection and enforcement by the city before any licenses renewed. Request transparency by the city in its review, inspection and enforcement of ordinances governing short-term rentals, much in the same manner as North Central Public Health publishes its reports of inspections of area hotels and restaurants. We appreciate your work to improve the quality of life for all residents of the Dallas. Sincerely, Sally Carpenter, me, as well as my neighbor Pat Matson. Give a copy of this to the city.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Carpenter?
I don't have any questions, but that feedback is really helpful. When I was reading what the Community Development Office was suggesting, it was kind of, I was trying to imagine like, what are the unintended consequences of saying yes to these things as they're written? So, I appreciate your thoughtful response.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we plan on addressing this at another public meeting.
Shooting for the tail end of October?
Yeah, you and your neighbors should pay close attention as to our website and make sure that, you know, if you want to attend, I assume you will, so.
Did I hear the 14th? At the target date? I just want to make sure.
One of the things that we do after city council meetings is our leadership team meets tomorrow morning to firm up all those schedules. So, we're tentatively slated for sometime in October, and then we publish our agendas in packets about a week ahead of time. So, we'll be 14th or the 28th, I think, is the second council meeting in October.
Thank you very much.
Will a copy of your staff report be available before the meeting, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also have a list of proposed amendments on the city's website right now.
Joshua Chandler, Community Development Director. On the city's website, there's news and updates at the bottom. There is a list there of the large changes or the biggest changes we're proposing on making. Some of those do include vicinity, a total cap. Thousand feet's not being proposed, but we will take that into consideration.
I appreciate that. And as of this morning, the link from your department's webpage called Short-Term Rentals, you click on that, it's just a blank page. And so, that's... I don't know why, I just want to let you know, that was my first source to go to for city information on this topic.
Thank you. We've been having some website issues of those downed pages, so we appreciate that. But currently, at the bottom of the main page, there's the news and updates. Go there, and that's the most up-to-date, and that was posted, I think, just last week.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you. Olga Maximoff?
Patrick Matson. And tied on to what Sally just presented. Like to talk about a couple of points.
I'm sorry, sir, could you identify yourself? I'm not.
Oh, I did. Patrick Matson. 313 West 20th.
Yeah, great, thanks.
The agenda report that was done back in July 22 was a bit concerning, and I don't know where council is now on it. But one of the biggest issues that I have trouble with is the grandfathering clause. My terms, you call it something else. But basically, it stated that all existing STRs should be exempt in these provisions. It just doesn't sit right. Why? Well, you all didn't know about this problem, so we brought it to you. Then, after we have the moratorium and pass the different procedures for short-term rentals, we're going to be in the same boat, we're going to have the same problems. And I'm not sure, I can guess, two guesses, or we have somebody that's used their capital to create a commercial enterprise. But we don't want to hinder that. Problem with that is the residents also have investment. Probably in a lot of cases, a major investment. By having the type of situation that we have now, which is, if I understand correctly, the highest ratio of residents STR in our neighborhood. That just doesn't seem fair. That is like my most important thing is that this should apply to the new rules and regs should apply to everybody. Now, if you want to do three years, okay. Grandfather them for three years until they have to meet these regulations, okay. But to grandfather them in for ever, that's just not fair to the community. And I don't know why. Real curious. I feel like, as far as I can tell, it's one owner and five properties. And why does he have more power than the community? Why does he allow, have a commercial business in a residential community? The other thing I'd like to bring up is the 100-foot notification. Well, you talked about this last time. I'm under that 100-foot notification. I got no notification. I would really like to see 1,000 foot. You know, you say, "That's too much." Okay, let's do 500. Let's do 500 and do it on the perimeter of every property. So, the people on the other side, because in this situation, we have West 21st and scenic, our neighborhood. So, those are my concerns, and I hope they're addressed. I don't know if I'll be in town when the October meeting is, but if I am, I will be there. You all have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much. We'll see you in, whenever the meeting is, hopefully.
Hello.
Take it, you're Olga Maximoff.
Hi, I'm Olga Maximoff. And I don't have time to type anything out, so it's all my scribble notes. I appreciate your time today. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I am new to the Dallas. I just moved here earlier this year. And I live by Radio Way and West Scenic, so now I am familiar with everything that my neighbors are talking about. I did learn from them about the short-term rental strains affecting the area and was able to learn about recent changes. Um, I did learn from them about the short term rental strains affecting the area and was able to learn about recent changes. To code proposed by city staff. Um, thank you to city staff for your work. It's always appreciated. I believe the proposal changes are good. Good start. But a couple of items stood out to me. I previously lived in a destination with a population of fifteen thousand people. So I understand intimately, uh, the impact of STRs and what it can bring to a small town. Um, first, I believe if the distance metric is used between, uh, short term rentals, should be measured as a radius rather than a line. Okay? Then you're going to ensure that this would better limit the density in our neighborhood, neighborhoods. Second, um, I would not favor a grandfather clause for existing STRs as I believe the city of the Dow should continue to monitor and regulate STR growth on an annual basis, every three years, whatever that ends up being. I think it's just not something you can walk away from. Um, given a lot of the comments that have been said here. And finally, if STRs are well regulated, this could provide an opportunity for a much needed increase in long term rental properties and availability, which could ultimately influence affordability. That's just my little Cliff Notes from what I read of the proposed changes. I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you. Okay. That does it for item six, and we'll move on to item seven, which is the city manager's report. Mr. Clebs?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. I wanted to let the, uh, council, uh, know that the Federal Street Plaza Ad Hoc Committee, uh, had their first meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the next meeting will be this Wednesday evening. Uh, we're really excited to see that committee come together and begin the good work towards exploring and coming up with different options for the Federal Street Plaza itself. A report from our, uh, uh, human resource director, Daniel Hunter, uh, he has, uh, completed, uh, the emergency response toolkit, uh, which is a project he's undertaken, uh, over the last several months and years, I should say, which includes updating our continuity of operations plan, the city's evacuation plan. And the final element was the acquisition of, um, stay bags, uh, with various supplies and materials to support upwards of fifty people for about fourteen days, specifically public works staff in the event of an emergency to allow us to have some resiliency during that response. Uh, I'd attended the Dog River, uh, ribbon cutting or completion ceremony, uh, along with a small cities meeting organized by Business Oregon. And then my last two comments, I just wanted to say, thank you to all the participants from the local government academy. And I also wanted to make sure and say thank you to staff who stayed late on those nights to assist with that academy. Uh, we really try and go, uh, you know, above and beyond to, uh, be as transparent and welcoming as possible to our community. And, uh, the, uh, the staff, uh, really worked hard on those presentations and tried to make them as fun, as interesting as possible. And I think that worked out really well. So thank you to staff. And then just a final comment is to express both my, my own personal and the community's appreciation specifically for Dave, Dave Anderson on the Dog River Pipeline. Uh, really appreciate your diligence and hard work and, and getting that project completed and across the finish line, uh, for the benefit of everybody here in this room this evening and for generations to come. So really appreciate the hard work there, Dave. That's my report.
Thank you. Um, we'll, uh, council reports will start, uh, we'll go to Zoom first and we'll go to Counselor Runyon.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me.
We hear you fine.
Okay. Uh, on nine eleven, September eleventh, I attended the Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue observance of the twenty third year since the attack on nine eleven, breaking down the Tin Twin Towers and the Pentagon attack and also in Pennsylvania. On the, uh, sixteenth, had a phone meeting with the, uh, city manager. And let's see what else we have here on the twentieth of September. Attended the POW Missing in Action, POW MIA, National Day of Recognition at the Kelly Viewpoint, well attended. And, uh, I hope we get more people next year. It's always on the third Friday of September. Also on the twenty third this morning, briefing session with the city manager and the city attorney and counselor Dan Richardson and I were in that meeting. And the other thing I had was following that meeting, individual phone calls, both with our city manager and then, uh, Mayor Rich May. So I thank them for their time today to help ferret out some issues. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Counselor Richardson?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. As, uh, Counselor Runyon already noted, we had a briefing session this morning that was, uh, I thought productive and helpful to start thinking through some issues that we'll be negotiating on. This weekend, I attended the Preparedness Expo and joined the Lions Club and grilling up some food for the attendees there. And last week, uh, I was honored to participate in the first official Plaza Ad Hoc Committee meeting. And, uh, we're pretty excited. I would say as a, as a group or as a team, we're pretty fired up to really wrestle with that and get some proposals brought forth. And that's my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McLaughlin?
On September sixteenth, I, uh, attended a homeless meeting with the, uh, homeless committee. Seventeenth, uh, urban, uh, development meeting. On the twentieth, I did attend the POW missing, uh, ceremony at Kelly Viewpoint. Uh, September twentieth in the morning, I was at the airport for a commission meeting. Uh, on today, this morning at eight o'clock, I was at the, uh, fire, Mid Columbia Fire District Interview Panel. And I completed that this morning. Last Friday, I did a briefing session with the city manager. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Yes. So September ninth, uh, through the thirteenth, I was in Washington DC with the community outreach team. Um, we were very busy, had some very productive meetings with some very good outcomes. I'll be doing, um, more detailed report later on that. Um, I also had a urban renewal agency meeting on the seventeenth last Tuesday. Um, where we have quite a few things going on there discussing whether we're going to increase our maximum indebtedness or not. And then I attended a briefing session with the city manager and another counselor and the mayor. And, um, and I did miss the Dog River Pipeline because I was stuck in LA overnight when my flight got canceled back from DC, which was a horrible experience. That's it.
I, I will note that, uh, Mr. Anderson did bring some, uh, mugs for, uh, the counselors on the dais here. A token from the event.
Counselor Randall?
This is right here. Okay.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the, uh, the nine eleven commemorative event with the Counselor Runyon. And, uh, on the nineteenth, attended the briefing session with Counselor Long, yourself, city attorney and city manager, and that's it.
Okay. All the items I was going to mention have already been mentioned, so we'll move on. Consent agenda. Items of a routine and non controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have three items on the consent agenda. First, approval of the September ninth city council meeting minutes. Second, approval of the August nineteenth work session minutes. And a resolution concurring with my appointment of Kerry Pippenich to the city's plan commission. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Runyon?
One of our, uh, guest speakers tonight talked about it would be nice if there was a list of all the short term rentals with, uh, addresses and so forth. And I would just like to point out that in our minutes tonight, if those individuals would go to the packet, uh, there is a list with, uh, email addresses, residential addresses for all the STRs.
Thank you for, uh, pointing that out. Um. I will point, I'd like to also point out that Ms. Pippenich, who I'd like to appoint to the plan commission is in attendance on Zoom. She's waving. And, um, uh, we did have a motion, right? So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Look at this.
And you're welcome to bring, is it Aiden? Is that his name? You're welcome to bring Aiden to the plant commission meeting. I might add a some, uh, some, some worthy discussion that, that, that from what I've been hearing. So thank you for accepting, uh, Kerry and, uh, congratulations on your appointment. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kerry.
Okay. Finally, uh, uh, item ten A is in us, is an ordinance vacating portions of public right of way. This is a public hearing. Now's the time specified for the city council to conduct a public hearing to considering, to consider the following matter. Petition for a right of way vacation seventy five dash two four, an application to vacate public right of way adjacent to fourteen oh five East Tenth Street, submitted by applicant Lonnie Capps. Quasi judicial hearings require the city council to make decisions using a certain process comprising criteria, evidence and specific findings. The, the substantive criteria upon which the city council will base its decision in this matter are found in the Dallas Municipal Code, chapter eleven point one six called Street Vacations. And ORS two seven one dot zero zero five to two seven one dot five four zero. A public hearing is required by Oregon law and certain rules apply. First and foremost, you must be recognized by me in order to speak and present testimony. When recognized by me, please proceed to the microphone and state your name and mailing address for the record, both of which are required by all Oregon law. The hearing is also required by law to be recorded. Generally, the public hearing procedure is as follows. First, I will open the public hearing with a staff report. The purpose of the staff report is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the application. Second, after the staff report, we will hear from the applicant if they are present and wish to testify. Third, I will ask for testimony from any proponents, those in favor of the vacation. And fourth, I will ask for testimony from any opponents from anyone who is not in favor of the proposed vacation. Finally, I'll ask for testimony from anyone else who wishes to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions. If any opponent testimony is submitted and to honor the right of the, of rebuttal, I will then provide an opportunity to hear again from those in favor of the vacation. To expedite the hearing, counselors may ask questions of persons as they testify. When this process has been concluded, I will close the public hearing, the public testimony portion of the hearing, and the council will deliberate toward a decision. Those are the rules. Are there any questions? Okay. With that, the public hearing is now open. May we please have a staff report, Mr. Chandler?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Mayes. Counselors Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Uh, back in January of this year, uh, Lonnie Capps, who is the applicant, property owner of, uh, one four zero five East Tenth Street. He submitted a petition of right of way vacation request. This is also known as a street vacation request to the city requesting to vacate a portion of right of way, um, located adjacent to his property. Uh, that full, uh, legal description of the right of way, uh, is listed on the first page of your staff report. Uh, so the purpose of this request is to incorporate this undeveloped, relatively, um, inaccessible portion of right of way, which is surrounded on all three sides by the property into the actual legal bounds of this property. Uh, this action is effectively a cleanup of the property, uh, boundary lines and serves, uh, the applicant's, uh, practical purposes here. Uh, staff confirmed the right of way has no public street improvements or utilities and is topographically constrained, uh, making it difficult for any future development. Uh, so upon receipt of the application, community development staff scheduled a, a site team meeting, a pre-application meeting, uh, with the applicant back in, uh, January, January eleventh, and detailed the city's requirements with, uh, what needs to be submitted with the application request. Uh, during that meeting, the city's public works department indicated they have no objection to this request. Uh, pursuant to the Dallas Municipal Code, petitions for vacations must include the consent and notarized signature of all property owners abutting the property, as well as the consent and notarized signature of all property owners of not less than two thirds of the total affected area. Um, there's a description in here on what that affected area is, but you can also see a map of it on page one twenty eight of your packet. In addition, the city requires that a survey and legal description be provided, for purposes of, of mapping and recording purposes of Wasco County. Uh, the applicant provided all documents, all required documents, copies of which are, are, are attached to the special ordinance, uh, as exhibit, excuse me, as exhibit two. So with assistance from Wasco County GIS, who put together this, this map as well as a list of, um, affected property owners, staff provided this information to the applicant, um, to go effectively door to door and collect these signatures of, of up to two thirds of the affected area. So the affected area is listed as four point seven acres. So therefore, two thirds would be three point one three acres. And the applicant pulled together three point one five acres worth of signatures. On July twenty fourth, the applicant submitted this information, all other required information for the application. And this is this, uh, that information is submitted, um, as exhibit one of your special ordinance. So notification process for a street vacation pursuant to the Dallas Municipal Code and Oregon revised statute. A notice of public hearing was published in Columbia Gorge News on September fourth and September eleventh. This is fourteen days prior to tonight's meeting. In addition, September ninth and September sixteenth, the city posted physical notices in two conspicuous places on the property itself, which is required. As I mentioned earlier, this is a, ultimately a very difficult place to get to on the property. It's, it's, uh, it's hard to get to that back portion of the property. So these two, uh, postings were actually right on the street frontage of Tenth Street. And then the notice of public hearing was sent to all local news media as well as posted on the city's website on September sixteenth. As of today and the date of this staff report, uh, we received zero comments, um, regarding this request. Uh, so with, uh, a, a street vacation application, you go through, um, review criteria that are listed here. There's five review criteria that I'll go through. Some of these may seem redundant because I just touched on some of them through this background. But the first, if the vacation proceedings were initiated by a petition, the consent, which is this one, the consent of all abutting property owners and at least two thirds of the affected property owners have been obtained, if the vacation proceedings were initiated by the action of city council, finding that owners of a majority of the area affected, um, have not been, um, have not objected in writing prior to this meeting. Um, as I mentioned, the applicant submitted this on July, uh, excuse me, January second, therefore it was not initiated by city council. Therefore required to obtain those signatures, as I mentioned. Um, with the, uh, as mentioned here, uh, with the information provided by Wasco County GIS and city staff, the applicant was able to comply, um, compile all, all, all two thirds, no less than two thirds of the signatures of the affected area. As of the day of the staff report, no objections, uh, concerning this request have been received. Uh, so finding number two, I touched on just briefly, that's the finding that touches on, uh, notice has been duly given. I walked through the different noticing requirements that were touched on. Uh, finding number three, the proposed vacation does not conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. Proposed vacation does not conflict with the city's comprehensive plan, specifically goal number eleven, which is public facilities and services, or goal number twelve, which is transportation. Staff determined the orderly and efficient arrangement of public facilities, services and access will not be impacted by this request due to the inaccessibility of the right of way, topographical constraints, existing development within the area and a lack of sufficient right of way. This is a portion of land that is only four point nine feet wide. So she can imagine the public works department, whenever they're installing lines, they need much more than four point nine feet to, to do any work in it. So it's really, um, too small to do much with. And as previously mentioned, the public works department has no objections to this request. Uh, finding number four, the public interest will not be prejudiced by the vacation of the public right of way. Uh, the application is, this application is part of a process which, uh, excess right of way is returned to adjacent property owners. Uh, the right of way has no street improvements or utilities, topographical constraints, which will limit, uh, future development and access. Uh, staff found that the public interest will not be prejudiced by the vacation. And then finding number five, if the vacation proceedings were initiated by council, I will stop there. This was not initiated by. This was not initiated by council, so therefore finding number five is not applicable to this request. Uh, budget implications, the total cost to the city for this, minimal, typical of most application processes, staff time and printing. If the request is approved, the applicant will be required to pay all associated mapping, recording, and filing fees of Wasco County. And those incidental city costs will be funded by the Community Development Department. Uh, so council alternatives, staff's recommendation, move to adopt special ordinance number 24-603 approving the petition for public right-of-way, uh, excuse me, the petition for public right-of-way vacation. I needed to add that in there. I did not include it on the staff report. My apologies. Application number 75-24, vacating portions of the public right-of-way adjacent to 1405 East 10th Street based upon the findings of fact and concluded in the law set forth in this agenda staff report by title only as presented. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Asking questions now?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the council can ask questions of anyone as they testify at any time.
Anybody have a question, any questions at this point for Mr. Chandler?
No.
I have one. Would, uh, would you guys be support, would the staff be supporting this request if the vacation was not on the western edge of the alley, if it was in the middle, for example? Would there, would there make, would that make any difference?
Um, I personally, I think we would support it. If you go into the area, you look and you try to find the alley, you can't even find it. Development has occurred over the years. It's just, you know, ultimately people are using that portion of right-of-way as their backyards now. There's fences in the area. This portion is extremely difficult. As I, you know, I mentioned, we couldn't even put a notice there because it's a, really, it's a large outcropping in an individual's backyard. So this is really just a cleanup process. And I do believe that staff would support a vacation if it was, you know, further east.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant here? And does he or she wish to testify? Mr. Lonnie Capps, is, is he here? Do you wish to testify, sir? Okay. All right. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, does anyone wish to testify in favor of the proposed vacation? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody in favor of this vacation? Okay, we'll move on. Does anyone wish to testify in opposition to the proposed vacation? Please come forward, state your name and address. Anybody in opposition to the vacation? Let the record show that no one has come forward to either be in favor or oppose the vacation. Does anyone wish to testify or ask questions on this matter? Not in favor or not opposed to the vacation? Okay. Does, do the councillors feel they have enough information to make a decision?
Yes.
Okay. So I assume you are ready for deliberations. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Would any councillor have any comments or questions from here? If not, I would encourage a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Richardson. This is about as simple a piece of business as we're likely to run across. I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt special ordinance number 24-603, approving the petition for public right-of-way, application number 075-24, vacating portions of the public right-of-way adjacent to 1405 East 10th Street based on the findings of fact and the conclusions of law set forth in the agenda staff report by title only as presented.
I'll second it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just a point of whatever. It's supposed to say public right-of-way vacation. So he needs to add that word in, I think, for the motion. Because Director Chandler pointed out that he had mistakenly omitted it, correct?
Yeah. You want to, uh, counsel Richardson on amending his motion, please?
Yeah, councillor Richardson, Director Chandler here. If you could add on that motion that you just made, right behind public right-of-way, just add in the word vacation. Everything else would be the same.
Yeah, consider it added.
And councillor Randall, you seconded. He's okay with it too. Okay. Okay, um, there has been a motion and a second to adopt the special ordinance. At this point, I have to ask if anyone is interested in having the city clerk read this entire ordinance in its entirety.
No.
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 Hey, I think we have a consensus of the council to move on. So.
Would you like me to read the title?
Yes, please read the title.
Special Ordinance Number 24603, a special ordinance vacating portions of public right-of-way adjacent to 1405 East 10th Street.
Vacation, the word vacation.
That's the title of the ordinance. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and anything else before we vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion, councillor Richardson, you got your hand up, but, um.
I was voting aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Capps. Congratulations.
Or the four feet.
The City Council of the City of the Dells will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, which allows the council to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the city council to carry on labor negotiations. Consistent with ORS 192.6604.
Mr. Mayor, I need to interrupt.
Let me finish this first. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Consistent with ORS 192.6604, representatives of the news media are not allowed to attend tonight's executive session and are asked to join all other members of the audience to leave the room. We're going to be meeting across the hall. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect to return in approximately 45 minutes. Councillor Randall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have to declare a conflict of interest before we go into executive session and recuse myself as it pertains to labor negotiations.
Thank you, councillor Randall. Okay, with that, we'll adjourn now into executive session.